I heard.
Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome to the Village of Buchanan, July 25th meeting, workshop meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'm gonna change the agenda a little bit. AMS is here. Not sure if you have an update. We have our planner, David Smith, here also.
So Mayor, the last time that AMS was before you was the July 5th meeting. It was a public hearing. You had, I believe you had one individual who came out. There were no new issues that were raised as part of the public hearing, so you closed the public hearing, but kept a written comment period open for a minimum of 10 days. The comment period expired on July 17th. There were no written comments submitted by members of the public or interested involved agencies. Since that time, the applicant has prepared responses to comments that came out of the public hearing process. They have prepared those, they've submitted them to you for their consideration. Representatives of AMS are here tonight. It's suggested that they be provided an opportunity to present the response to the comments and see if the board has any questions with respect to the responses.
Okay, and this is the packet that we just received today.
Yes.
So it's, I will say this, it's difficult, I will speak for myself, it's difficult for me to be able to have time to go through this when it's on a meeting day. So I very quickly looked through it, but I'm not prepared at this point to make any comments on it.
Right, I think it's just important that, at least that the, there's an opportunity for you to hear from the applicant tonight, and you're right, you just received the information. It's important that the village board, as the lead agency, take a hard look, the hard look under Seeker, to review the information and to see that it's adequate and correct in its format and its presentation.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. I think I need some time to look at this as well.
Absolutely.
Appreciate AMS being here and giving us an update on this, but, yeah, Stephen.
Okay, so yes, if AMS would like to come to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, Mark Weingarten on behalf of AMS. And before I turn it over to Peter Farah, our planner from AKRF, who was there in charge of the responses, et cetera, so everybody understands where we are. The hearing was closed on July 5th. There were, at that time, we had to gather all of those public comments. We then had to put the responses together. We shared them with your professionals. We went back and forth over them to make sure that it was clear and that all the information was provided that you were looking for. That's what took three weeks, and that's why you got it yesterday. So we weren't expecting you to look at it tonight, but that's how long it took. So we're happy to go through it with you. We hope that the information is satisfactory. If there's anything missing, you'll let us know, and we'll, we look forward to getting, you know, continuing on with the process. So we appreciate your time and your effort. So Peter Farah will go through the responses with you.
Great, thank you. Thanks. So the first thing, we basically provided two pieces of information in that memo, two types of information. The first was kind of confirmation, information that confirmed the analyses that we had done prior. So one was with respect to the number of police department calls. We had obtained information from the Village of Osning. So we presented that, and that information, you know, confirmed that they were looking at somewhere between one and two calls per month to Harbor Square, which is, what, 25% bigger than what we're proposing? It's 188 units, I believe. 30%? So you think that tracks with the analysis that we had presented before about the potential impacts to the police department? But you and your planner had asked for that confirmation, so we obtained that and sent it in. The next piece of information had to do with the potential impact of the proposed zoning on other parcels in the village. What could this mean for the one other site to which it could apply? And so we presented that information, how many units, et cetera. Not that we're proposing any development on that site, or you're proposing it, but just for the record, what could be out there, knowing that if a proposal of that nature was to come before your board, it would have to go through the same secret process. But we wanted to put that in the record. And then the third piece was confirmation with respect to the ecological resources. We couldn't go out and do the full site visit until the leaves came out on the site and we could get everything scheduled. So we were able to do that and confirm the analysis that we had presented. And so what we did was include a revised appendix to the EEAF. We had originally presented Appendix C, a natural resources report. What we did is we revised it based on that site visit. And it gave a little bit more specifics about the species they observed on or near the site, deer, geese, et cetera, and what the potential impacts of the project would be on the habitat out there. And so again, that confirmed what we had already presented in the EEAF and provided a little bit more specificity. So that was those three pieces of kind of supplementary information. And then we provided response to comments that were received in the public hearings. And that had to do with the fiscal and economic benefits of the project, the potential for school-aged children, potential impacts to village services and infrastructure, traffic, natural resources, vegetation, the fire department, and certain site plan comments. There was no new information that we provided in those response to comments. We simply referred to the information that we had previously provided and talked about how that information responded to those comments. So that's the second half of the memorandum that we provided. Happy to talk through it, but understand it's a lot of information to digest, but wanted to give you kind of a quick, a quick outline of that.
Got some reading material here. We asked for it, we got it, right?
Yeah, the Appendix C is probably the longest in terms of the text because we provided the entire thing again, even though it just is an update. And the updates, again, had to do with the site-specific observations that were made, as well as we provided, archaeologists love to provide detail about everything that could be there. So we get the English name, the Latin name, and then a whole family history of every bird and bat.
So because I haven't, I haven't read it, that you have a list of snakes here. These were the snakes that you found on site?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't read it.
No, 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 no.
Didn't realize there were that many.
No, no, no.
This is what happens when you don't read it first.
These are, so based on, what we started with was kind of desktop research. So we looked at the breeding bird atlas, the New York State DEC herp atlas that talks about the species that could exist in large sections of the state, this quadrangle, that quadrangle. Then we go out and we say, is there that habitat on the site that could support those particular species? Yes, no? Then we come up with a list, these snakes could be there. Did we see them? No. Could they be there? Sure, they're snakes. And then what is the potential impact? And what can we do to mitigate that impact? So in the case of reptiles and amphibians, what we talked about was the mitigation of making sure that when you install the silt fencing, that we're installing it all the way around the site to exclude those animals so they don't come into the construction site overnight, or something like that. When we talk about the bats, did we see any bats? No. Could there be bats? Sure, they're really small, right? And they're, they sit and live in the bark of the trees, right? They go inside the dead bark. So how are we gonna mitigate that? We're not gonna cut down trees during the times when they might be in those trees. We're gonna do it during the winter when they're hibernating. So that was really what we went through here.
Thank you.
And I don't do snakes, so someone else did it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Mayor, the entirety of the record that's been prepared as part of this application is now before your board. So I think it's important for you, again, to take a look at what's recently been submitted. You can provide any comments that you may have to my officer, Mr. Serrano. We'll make sure that the applicant has a chance to respond if necessary. And then just procedurally, the next steps, once you have a comfort level that you've looked at all the information and you feel comfortable, the next step is to make a determination of significance. And part of the package that you received were some of the environmental assessment forms, Part II, Part III, and then a written explanation of the proposed actions and reasons supporting a determination of, right now, what we're calling a no significant impact. So that's a companion piece that, once you get through the documents that you just received, that would be the next step, is to start to look at that document to make that environmental determination.
100% correct and agree with your planning commissioner and your village planner. And we would hope that, you know, that you're in the position to be able to do that now and read it, that we've given you all the information that you've asked for, that it makes sense, and that you're ready to act. And when you do that, that is the step that has to occur prior to the rezoning of the property. And as you know, once that occurs, and it can happen one after the other, then we would be able to proceed to site plan and really get into engineering and all of the types of site questions that everyone has very anxiously been asking us about for many months now, and we can start spending the money and going into the detail of doing that and putting together a site plan and special permit package that we would come back to you with, which, again, will take a couple of months to put together. But we need this step to occur first before we do that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments this time, or good?
Great, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Okay, next is George Palmer, our village engineer. He's gonna talk about paving first.
Sure. At the last board meeting, we talked about the paving that's going to occur this year. We just had a, just received an email from the contractor, that's the lowest bidder. They just submitted bonds and insurances, so we should be able to put together an agreement to get them signed up and started. We'll have that over to you, and then we'll get a schedule of work when they're gonna start. And at the last meeting, we talked about the balance that was in the, the balance of... Okay. We talked about the balance of money that was in the, between what the village has budgeted and what the bid came in at, and we can finish Broadway. We, as we mentioned in the previous meeting, we were going to do that section of Broadway, and we're gonna do it.
So just, I'm sorry, just spell out the section, so that, because when you say Broadway, people are gonna think it's from Verplank to Peak Scale.
We were doing from the entrance of Lenz Cove up to Blakely Avenue. We took that out, we did just a small section, put in the bid because Con Ed was gonna do some driving up and down of trucks on the roadway. They've since not decided to do that. The cost of that work that we took out was about $100,000. So we came in at 800, so 900, so we can do that. We'd have money even left over after that. So that's where we're at with, as far as paving.
All right, good.
And just for everybody, information update, everybody on the Ketchum Avenue issue that we had a couple of weeks ago?
Sure, we met with, we met with Con Ed and their representative, their paving representative, and we talked to them about the work that was done, and they said, "We understand what was there before, and we'll put it back to the way it was," more or less is what they said. So that's where we ended up.
Hey, George, just one quick question on Blakely Avenue. So from Lenz Cove to Blakely Avenue on Broadway?
Yep.
That's what you're gonna pave? Now, one thing that I think of is we've had questions from Clear Path, stuff like that, right? You know, so if we ever go and get involved with anything like that, they're gonna need to test holes on infrastructure all through that area
Yeah.
To locate everything.
Yeah, so we know where the gas is because they just recently paved that side of the street. The other side we know is the electric that comes down from Con Ed. So, and then there's some water mains down there. So yeah, there's some utilities that cross through there. And hopefully, if they do come to the village with a proposal and they have to do something, they're gonna have to actually redo, back to the middle of their road.
I don't wanna waste that money that we have where we could use it somewhere else when we could put that on somebody else's shoulders at that time.
It's a valid point. You maintain a list of the roads, and, you know, where does that fall in regards to, you know, in relation to other roads within the village?
So that section of Broadway has an electrical trench in it that's settled and whatnot. So it became a safety concern. Trustee Stewart mentioned it the last year.
People have been complaining, yeah.
People complain, it's a safety issue. It's going into the next, we were lucky, last year, we had a very mild winter. So this year, it's gonna be, it might be worse. It's getting hotter, so maybe not. So, but we should, we need to pave it, because there's a real significant dip in the road.
So if the substructure isn't intact, then the asphalt's gonna end up in the same place it is now.
So in our, in our bid, we have three inches of asphalt and two inches of top. So we're basically starting with a new, it has settled so much that if you put a straight edge across it, there's like five inches of dip in the road. So that's, it's not in a good condition at all, so we should really do something, and...
Trying to figure out how we can put that on Con Ed, that's my line.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Because it is, there is 16 ducts that go into that road. It's an electric line, there are 16 ducts.
Yeah.
And the backfill on, obviously, wasn't done properly. And it will continue to settle if there's, if it hasn't finished settling yet.
Yeah, Con Ed, when that was originally done, and I remember that the inspector who was there, they made a deal, they said, "Well, we said we wanted a five-year guarantee on the trench." And they said, "Well, we can't give you that, but we can repave the entire road for you." So that's before we were repaving. So now, you know, it's settled.
2012, that was.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
2010, actually.
So a long time ago, it's 10, it's over 12 years, so...
So everyone knows Clear Path is a company that has approached the Village of Buchanan, has approached Peak Scale, and what it is, it's renewable energy from Delhi that's coming down, and they need a place to come in with it because it's gonna eventually end up in Queens. So they've talked to the village if it's possible that they can come ashore in the village. They wanna go down to, what is it, Osning, to go back into the water. They don't wanna go totally down the river.
Yeah, they can't, they can't go into Croton and Havestrop Bay.
Yeah, they need a port of entrance to go, to come onto land, and then go back out beyond the Havestrop Bay.
So it depends, you know, what their thoughts are. Originally, I know, I had spoken to them, and I told them their best access would be to actually come in through Peak Scale and go right up to nine on that road there. I mean, it's a direct access. So I'm, you know, so they're still considering that, they're still considering, you know, the Village of Buchanan, so we will keep you apprised on, as that moves forward, if they're still interested in coming into the village.
And just so that board updated, and George correct me if I'm wrong, one of the options they were looking at is actually coming across from Lenz Cove and also cutting across the vacant piece of property between our sewer treatment plant and cutting across land back onto Route 9A. So they were thinking of bypassing Blakely Avenue. So they have a whole bunch of different routes, and they haven't made determination, and they haven't told us when that decision would be made.
I mean, it could be years, but just, even though the mains and the infrastructure is located, they will do, they will put eyes on it, they will dig test holes.
Yep.
They have to, for their engineering.
And I think you're gonna need permission from the village board, and at that point, I think we're gonna have to make them mill and pave from curb to curb.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And new sidewalks, and playground, and basketball court, there you go.
And the way this is moving, this has been moving so slow. But I did get information today from the Public Service Commission. There's a petition, a certificate of compatibility and public need. Like I said, it goes from Delhi to Queens, and it's, has something to do with party status, intervenor funding, and schedule. So Marcus, if you could look further into that to see what their scheduling is. Because they have to go through a whole process, so this is not happening tomorrow. But, you know, we told them we'd continue to discuss things with them.
Yep.
George, I have a question regarding Broadway there. Are we gonna be doing the curbs there?
We...
The curbs are in really bad shape.
We have sections of curbs that are gonna be replaced, yes. Not the whole thing, but the sections that are bad.
Would that mean we'll have to redo some of the sidewalk, too?
Uh, yes.
One thing leads to another, right, George?
Yes. Yeah, we were hoping that Clear, Clean Path or Clear Path? Clean Path?
Clean Path.
Clean Path would kinda tell us where they were going. It would be nice if they went under the sidewalk, replaced the sidewalk and curb.
That's what, that's what we're hoping they would do.
That's what we're hoping they would do, but they haven't gotten back to us, so... And as Marcus said, there's a, there's a strip on the Griffin property and the Village easement, there's a right-of-way that goes into Buchanan Executive Park. And then from there, they were talking either going down Greentown or going tunneling out towards 9A. So they had, they had a number of different routes and paths that they were considering.
Marcus, they give you these, 'cause I've only heard of one path. So that's the first time I'm hearing about them cutting through any of the property.
They discussed it, and they haven't provided, I said, "Can we get a copy of it?" And I said, "No, this is the draft information yet, we're not wanting to release anything yet. We're looking at different options. When we determine one or two, then we're gonna present it to the village board at that point."
Okay.
Their preferred path.
Could be 10 years from now.
Yeah, I know, everything moves slow, I know. So George, what do you got for us on grants?
Grants, so we have the WQIP grant and $1.4 million. And we had a meeting with the DEC, so from that meeting with the DEC, I'm sorry. From that meeting with the DEC, they said, "If you change the grant and make modifications to it, we can reevaluate it and possibly give you more money." So that's essentially what we did. We added in the Albany Post Road Pump Station, which in one of their documents, there was three phases. There was to rehabilitate the existing plant, to add capacity, and to rehabilitate the Albany Post Road Pump Station. That was in the third phase. And in our discussion with the DEC, they said, "Yeah, you can make the Albany Post Road Pump Station, you can put that second if you don't have a clear, you know, defined need for the capacity right now, and you can put that towards the next grant." So when we know more about what's happening with the Entergy site, we'll probably make that decision then, so...
And I thought that was important, the Albany Post Road Pumping Station, because Bob, you were, I'm laughing now, but it was pretty scary. This is going back, oh gosh, Sean was the mayor at the time, and it was a Sunday breakfast thing. He was over there cooking, and the sewer foreman called me and said, "Teresa, we're gonna flood." And I'm like, "What?" So I went down there because there was a problem with the property, and it was overflowing from the railroad tracks, and that whole back property was flooded. So what it was doing was raising the level where our pump station was, and we were close. We were pretty close. So I know the fire department came. You know, I called Sean, he had the fire department come out, and they pumped out that whole area that was flooded. But we were that, we were that close for that, that pumping station. So that was always like a priority in my head, because it was a scary day. I went into there and I saw how close it was, and I was like, "Oh, this is not good." So, good, I'm glad we're putting that in to see if we can get the money for that.
Sure.
So the original grant that we got last year, the year before, was 1.4. So you're going...
1.6.
1.6, we're going...
Six or four? I thought it was 1.4, but it's around there.
So we're gonna re-go into the WQIP again because that's the highest grant percentage. And what we don't get out of that, we will get from the Entergy money. It's not state money, it's the Entergy Community and Environmental Grant, so... So hopefully, next year, we can start moving along on upgrading the plant.
Correct.
Good, good, good. That's good news, that's really good news. Okay, so that takes care of that. And the next thing you have is standard construction details and specs related to paving.
So, yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting about upgrading the specifications. And how can we, so we had that situation on Ketchum. How can we make it so that the village has more power or authority to, you know, dictate where we begin and end on paving? So in talking to Con Ed, inspectors, their attorneys, and everyone over the years, they said that you have to be very specific about how you do it. You can't just say, "Well, I'm gonna give Marcus Serrano authority to say where we begin and end." Because Mr. Capocotti raised that issue at the last meeting. So they said, "Okay, you have to set it up in such a way that it says, okay, if you're disturbing, you know, let's say, these three houses on a road," I'm using Ketchum as an example, "that instead of doing, just stopping at one location, if you're doing more than 50% of the road, you have to go from intersection to intersection." That's the kind of way that they would want that written so that they can do what you ask and be compliant with your standard. So that's probably try to correct, and we've done this over the years, as we mentioned in the last meeting. Every time Con Ed says, "Oh, your specs doesn't say this," we go change it. And the next year, something else would come up, we'd change it the next... So if you looked at our revisions for the standards, it, five years in a row, we've made changes because they would say, "Oh, well, it doesn't say exactly that." So we kept changing it.
Kept tweaking it, right?
We kept tweaking it to go, "Okay." And then we got to the point where, "Okay, you touch the road, you go from curb to curb and for this length of road." So that's, that's kinda where we ended up, so... And they said, "Well, keep in mind, every time we pave and do this, prices go up for everything." And I'm like, "Well, okay, well, I'll live with that." So, what are you gonna do? They were making Swiss cheese of the roads at one time.
Oh, yeah, 'cause at one time, remember, they were coming in just doing patches, 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 and they were ripping up the whole road. So that's when, that's when we changed the standards where it was. They had to do, at least to the midpoint of the road.
Yes, and then midpoint became, if you do a certain length, then you do the curb to curb, and then, oh, we had all sorts of iterations in the back of the code. So it constantly gets updated. So any kind of, any kind of updates or any kind of thing like, recommendations like that, we'll work it in there. Con Ed says, "Well, if you put it in there, we can do it, but we don't, we can't just do something that you ask because then everybody would ask, and then we'd be just paving the world." So they said, "Try to..."
What I brought up in the point was, is the limits. Who verifies the limits of paving? So like when you said, "So if you do 50% of the road, then you own the road."
Right.
Okay, that's good. So then you go out there, or our DPW foreman would go out and oversee the limits to make sure that the limits are satisfied for the village's standards.
So if, let's say for, again, to catch them where they did, so they got to the, currently, they got to like the third house. And where they, where that trench or where that service line ended, that's where they ended their restoration. So in the new iteration, it would be, "Okay, you disturb more than 60%, go to the next intersection." So, and then, yeah, someone like Bob or someone would oversee.
Yeah, because it has to be, you have, it has to be looked at because I don't care if it says it in the standards or not. They're gonna do, the contractor's gonna go out with the field inspector, and he's gonna say, "All right, right up here, that's good." And nobody's gonna come and look at it and determine, "Well, no, 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 the standards say this, we have to continue." So we need somebody to put eyes on it to see, to make sure that our standards are completed. And you can't obviously be there all the time. So we need to educate in-house to make it done, to get it done.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm looking for, really. And thank you for doing what you did and reaching out to Con Ed guys. I think that brings a valid point, because I've done a lot of Con Ed excavation, and I, the standards, that's why I'm saying this, because their standards are whatever they want. You know what I mean? It's basically the last disturbance, House 52, last disturbance, they go, there's a three-by-three pit, they go two foot past the three-by-three pit, and they pave the road. And then if there was a big pothole over here, now the elevations are two different elevations, and you create a problem like you did on Ketchum.
Yep.
But that's where we need to educate in-house to make sure that these standards are followed. That's pretty much what I wanna do.
Understood.
George, what's the turnaround time on that? Did they give you a timeframe as to like when they're gonna have that rectified?
So, the, the paving contractor that did the work for Con Ed is the paving contractor that's gonna do our work this year.
Okay.
So, he said, I appreciate it if you could work it into the paving schedule this year. So, when I'm out here with my-
So, September, October, we're probably looking at?
Exactly. So, uh, so we just got the bonds and insurance, so I would think that we could turn that around pretty quickly. So, you're right. July is almost ended. August, late August, September, yeah, yeah.
All right.
So, yeah.
That'll be good, because usually we're last minute afterthoughts and, you know, and it's, it gets iffy. And you've seen it happen before. One of the other things in the standards was the crack sealing too. Of when they do some areas, that then they hit it with a crack sealing so that, you know, it doesn't become a weak spot.
Yes. So, after they pave, we've, we've added that in, and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna verify that. We've added it in more places than one because, yeah, they, when you meet, an, an existing road meets a new road, you want that sealed. And I know they did it out here on, when they did Village Hall, they, they sealed all around it. But when the guy comes to do the restoration, it's gotta be me clear that a restoration requires the ceiling as well.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
And then there is one thing I noticed when I was out driving the other day across from the hardware store, going up Gallagher Street. There is, in, in the middle section, we need, we need some crack sealing there. Cause that road is not that old and it's separating in the middle.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's a common problem because they have to put a cold joint somewhere.
Yeah.
And the cold joint is down the middle. And that's, that's the most vulnerable part of the paving. And one, one community actually tried to overcome that by getting a twelve-foot wide, a twenty-four-foot wide paver. And they paved the whole road all in one shot, all in one day to try to minimize that problem. It kinda worked. So, you have to have, you have to have a lot of-
There's no crown in the road. You gotta break the paver somewhere. You gotta put a crown in the road.
Yeah, it's tricky.
We usually do that at airports on taxiways.
At airports.
Thirty-five foot spread.
Yeah, so if we have-
Paying rental on that.
So, you have to do a lot of road, so it's, if you have a nice, like Broadway would be a good one to do it on, but it's, it would take a lot of. So, there's a lot of truing and leveling that would need to be done before you do that.
That's wrong.
You'd true and level it first, and then you'd bring in that machine, and then you would do, so it, it's not-
Not in the budget, George. Not even close.
You know, sometimes this works. Just seal it in the middle and-
Yeah, so.
I am gonna go out of water. I'm going out of water tonight, but nothing is set in stone. So, George, I want you to be here because there was an email that came out today that I was a little bit concerned about. Marcus, if you could review it, because I, I quickly looked at it. This is about the battery storage, what's going on over there. So-
So, I got an email from Jupiter about having access to the wastewater treatment plant to do their survey. So, I don't understand how the board authorized them to come in and do so. So, they wanna come in on August first to walk the property and go inside the building as well for their survey. So, that was the, so I forward that to the board, to the board to make sure you go.
I saw that today, yeah.
Yeah, that was it.
But they sent an email to Stephanie. Didn't we talk about this? They emailed you about doing a survey?
No, no. I emailed them. You guys, you guys had authorized me to, authorized them to do a survey a month or more ago. And, and in no uncertain terms, the email's very clear. They were paying for it. They would restore anything they disturbed. And that we would not, it wasn't an offer to, to sell the land or to, and David said, ball's in my court, I'll let you know. And I never heard back?
And David is who?
I'm sorry, Steinmetz, the other attorney.
Oh, oh, oh.
He acknowledged receipt and said, I'll let you know.
Just in briefly reading the email that you sent to us, it says that, you know, no service will be performed due to not having the escrow, which I understand. But what services are they asking provided other than access to the property?
I just wanna make sure they didn't want to have any sit down with the engineer like we did with-
Did they ask for that?
No. I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so then I don't think-
Well, they wanted, they were looking at utilities. So, I thought, we have to work of our utilities. So, they want to sit down with George. But I say, no, they don't need to meet with George. They're gonna do their own equipment and do their own survey. So, I just wanna make sure that, like, Clear, uh, Clean Path-
Yeah, but they're not doing any excavation or anything over there. They're gonna do just a, just a mark out?
Yes, that's what I believe they're gonna do. That's my understanding, yes.
Oh, cause then they would have to put escrow. I mean, if they're doing any excavation or anything.
That's what I told, that's what I told them. I was like, they know they just wanted to do some kind of a magnetic reading of where the utilities might be.
So, so the public understands what's happening. Jupiter, the battery storage company that was here in the village once before, has approached board members to be able to survey near our sewer treatment plant. They're still very interested in putting battery storage here. And I'm a little concerned what's going on. That letter concerned me a lot when I saw that today. I know the board did approve doing a survey over there. And the more I thought about it, the more I'm concerned about it. It is by our sewer treatment plant. It is on Village of Buchanan property. And we are going to eventually have to expand that plant. I am hoping this doesn't involve anything with our plant. That's our largest asset. I'm concerned how they're dealing with the Village of Buchanan. If you can't do stuff in the light of day, then you've got a problem. This is a, this is a disgusting company. They're very sneaky, backstabbing, and backhanded. I don't do business with people like that. So, but the board has agreed to let them, let them survey. They have a huge offer they have put on the table for the village if we accept a battery storage facility. Next to our property is Glenn Griffin. That's the property, and he's going around telling everyone that he's gonna have battery storage there. So, I, under the circumstances, and I, and my real concern is, is the state is so desperate for, for doing renewables. They don't give a damn for anything. I'm just concerned if this ends up being a, a good site for them, that there's gonna be eminent domain. So, I am against, I have been against the battery storage. That's why this company will not contact me and has gone and contacted the board members. I am against it. I'm a hundred and fifty percent against it. I'm a hard absolute no. I don't like them dealing with the board and not coming and asking for permission. Do you come into a village building? No. So, this going stuff behind the scenes is unacceptable. If they wanted to come into our building, they needed to come in front of the village board and ask for permission. So, you can tell I'm a little bit angry, but I'm concerned. I, I am not, I, I just, I don't understand why we're doing this survey if we're, if we're doing the survey because that's what the board wants, the battery storage over there. Let's also remember that it is not zoned for that. It is not zoned for that, and we can't do spot zoning. So, if that gets approved, where are we gonna have battery storage? And another point I'd like to make, we are going, we are going to pursue again those sixty acres. We're still working on that. I'm gonna be working with the county shortly with federal money to rezone the area and, and work with, with money that's available. And I'll be bringing that to the board after I go to the county. But I don't know anybody in their right mind that would wanna build any type of a development near those damn battery storage things. And we all seen what happened in Warwick over ten days for that thing to go out. And that was the new technology. So, this Hans approached me first, but this is the new technology. This isn't gonna do that. Well, that's what it was in Warwick too. It was the new technology. So, I would like to poll the board at this time and see who is in favor of battery storage. So, we can know how we're moving forward here. Because I just don't think it's right that we have these people surveying this property if we're not interested. Bob Wheeler, I'm gonna start with you. Are you for battery storage?
Well, just to clarify some things here, yes, I did have a conversation myself. And I just thought that the guy actually just had the, the right to at least say what he had to say and I was willing to listen. When I first heard, of course, the offer that was made a lot of years ago, we go, wow, that's a, it sounds good. But after looking at some things myself and seeing what happened in Warwick and all that kinda stuff, I don't think it's the right place for it myself, so.
Thank you, Bob. Steve Laker?
I don't think we're in the position right now. I, I don't understand what we're voting for. As a trustee, I did vote and allow this potential developer to have access to survey the property. And that's the only thing I allowed. Beyond that, I'm willing to listen to anybody. And that's, that's where I stand.
So, you're not concerned about what the potential of the battery storage is?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, I just wanna, I just wanna be clear.
If they were to come to the village with a proposal, then I would evaluate it like I would anything. And, and, and the pros and the cons and, and see what's for. Personally speaking, no. I, I read the things in the news. I, you know, I see every, all the concerns regarding battery storage. So, absolutely have a concern. But to have this person survey the property, I don't see the harm in that. And that's, that's really the only thing I voted for so far.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm just, you know, like, like I said, I'm just concerned if they feel that it's a viable spot that they might, we might get into a, a situation with the state with eminent domain.
But is that, I, I don't know enough about eminent domain. Maybe our attorney can speak to that. But isn't that possible in, in any property that's, that's within the village?
Yeah.
Regardless of if we allow these people to, to survey it or not?
Yeah. But now they know it's a viable spot. So, if they survey it. So, I just, you know, there's been a lot of information throughout the country. Warwick was just a prime example of locally.
Oh, absolutely.
And I just, you know, I'm concerned. I just, I just don't like, I don't like how Mr. Hans is doing business.
I understand your concern. I don't understand any of the comments regarding the company itself. Maybe I just don't know enough about the company.
It's the way they do business. It's like, they should be in front of the-
And as a, as a trustee, I, I think it's our responsibility to look at all the options that are available. And if these individuals come and they wanna survey a property that the village owns, I'm willing to do that. Beyond that, that's, that's something that we would have to discuss amongst ourselves.
I don't, yeah. Like I said, I don't think it's an option for me at all, but that's me. So, I just wanna get direction from the board. I wanna get clear direction. I want the public to understand what the potential is that's gonna happen here. And I'm just, you know, the other sixty acres, I certainly wouldn't build anything near that. They had to evacuate a half a mile, half a mile out of there. So, I don't know. I, I just think the technology is not there yet. So, Steve, you're still looking for more information?
Yes.
Dan, what do you got?
Well, I, again, to reiterate like the rest of the board members, did we, did I, you know, say yes to them surveying the property? Yes. But I think I was pretty clear when they presented here my feeling about battery storage. I'm not a big proponent of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm still willing to listen and try and keep an open mind. But, you know, I would, I'm not for battery storage. I'm, you know, I'm not a big fan of it. I happen to have a good friend of mine that lives in Warwick. So, I'm aware of what the dangers are of it. But again, just trying to keep our options open. And that's the only reason why, you know, I was willing to listen and to agree to the survey. But am I a proponent in, in favor of battery storage? No.
So, if, so Wheels is a no, you're a no, I'm absolute no. If it, if it was battery storage. I just don't, you know what I'm saying? I, I think there's other-
So, does it matter, right?
No, wait, absolutely. You know what? I'm one of those people that I like to listen to everybody's opinions here, you know? So, it's just, I, I, you know, I just don't think it's nice. I don't think it's good business to have a company come in, spend all this money. Why they wanna come into our buildings, I have, I have no idea. I'm not really happy about that. You wanted to survey property?
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I just received the email. Looking at it though, Marcus, it, it's coming from a third party that's asking. It's the person that's surveying the property that asked for access to the buildings. Do they know that they're not allowed to have access to the buildings or not? And is this coming directly from Jupiter or from this third party?
From the third party on behalf of Jupiter.
Okay.
Again, um-
Was there any conversation to say, no, we don't, we do not want you to have access to the buildings?
No, I understand. My belief was the, the board agreed to allow them to survey the property.
Right, the property owned.
We have somebody there to walk around the property for our own protection and if they wanna walk. Now, if the board decide they don't want him in the building, I just need the direction from the board.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, you can walk the property. We can't get in the building.
And I agree with that.
Whatever you guys wanna do, I just wanna then relay that information back to them. So, whatever you guys decide.
And I don't believe they should have access inside the buildings either. It was agreed that they could survey the property, and that was all.
So, then we tell them we can't, they can't have access to the building?
Okay.
There's no reason for it.
It could be.
The attorney never mentioned access to inside anywhere.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at. Was it just somebody not knowing what the situation was?
Yep, no problem.
So, Anthony Capicotti, let's, let's hear with you. I know you wanna say something, so.
I don't really have a lot to say about it, but you know, it, it does bring up some interesting things here. Cause Marcus, were you not here when we talked to Stephanie about that, about doing the survey? So, you're very aware of the survey?
Oh, absolutely. That's why I wanted you to know.
Something you just said to me made it seem like you didn't know what we were talking about.
Oh, no, no. I said, I, I said, I received their email, so I'm gonna forward it to the board. I already set up for Todd to be there on the first.
So, I was part of agreeing with the email that you were part of that said we could do a survey because there was a substantial amount of money offered to the Village of Buchanan. That is for the village piece of property that is next to Griffin's piece of property where that could turn into eminent domain and they could wind up doing it anyway. So, why shouldn't the village benefit from this? Do I want battery storage? No, I do not. I do not think that it is the right place. I do not think it's the right time. I agree with Teresa. The technology is not there. But the amount of money they offered us is substantial. And the Village of Buchanan is not in the position to say no without giving somebody the ability to investigate. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that we can't shut the door without knowing the facts. Okay? That's a lot of money they offered. And I don't like it, but I wanna hear about it. And that's all I'm saying. I just wanna hear about it. I don't want to, I'm not voting on anything today.
No, we're not voting. We're just pulling for it.
And I just wanna hear. Do I want them going into buildings? No. As a matter of fact, there's no reason for them to go into buildings. This, this only was to let them, uh, survey the property to see, I don't even know what to see. I really don't even know what they're looking for. I mean, I don't know if it's, I mean, they have the access to Griffin's property. So, what did they actually survey? And I mean, it wasn't in the notes. It didn't say anything. It just said, we wanna access certain things. For what reason, I don't know. So, if there's secret meetings going on in, in the dark of the night, I wasn't a part of that dark of the night meeting that said what they needed to survey or why they needed to survey. I feel that we do need to look into it. It was brought to my attention. And initially, it wasn't brought to my attention or any of your attention the right way.
No, absolutely not. They should be, they, anytime a developer comes, they should be directed to come to the front of the board.
But initially, they came to you with that substantial agreement. No, you did not.
Yes, I did. I came to the board and I told you Jupiter is here. This is what they wanna give to the village. I am against it.
Does, does anybody remember that?
Millions of dollars. I, I will look at the meeting. It was, it went into executive session.
It did go into executive session, but you said to us, they offered me a lot of money and I told them where to go. That's what you said to me.
No, I told them that the village wasn't interested with the amount of money.
But that's without us discussing it.
I bought, but I bought it in front of the board.
But you already gave them an answer before you brought it to the board.
No. I brought it to the board. So, at that point, if you said to me, no, we want it, it would've went forward.
All right. Well, I must have misunderstood it then.
Two months goes by, and then they contacted each of you individually.
And how do you know that?
Um, you, you were the one that just told me before one of the meetings, but the rest of the board members never came forward and said anything to me. I found out from one of Hans and Hensmen that they contact, yeah?
We all met individually?
Each, they called each and every one of the board members.
Well, I'm gonna have to get, find out why he's lying everywhere.
So, going forward- Going forward, when a developer attempts to attack anybody, please tell them they've gotta come in front of the board. When I first became mayor, I got some really good advice. And it was from an attorney friend of mine down in Yonkers. Teresa, never ever meet with a developer one-on-one, because this is what happens with these people.
Well, we, we would hope that that would work in, on both sides of the, in the room.
Absolutely.
Likewise. Because there's been multiple times where you had it, had discussions with people that even, even Hold Tech. And you've done things-
And I bought it back.
You did bring it back, but after the fact. You made decisions and then we've heard about it.
I haven't made decisions, Anthony. And I'm, and I'm gonna tell you something else, because I've been accused on this board of not being transparent. because I've been accused on this board of not being transparent. So what just happened here, we can play both sides of this, that wasn't very transparent either. So either we work together as a board, because this is what these people do. They pick you off one at a time. Unite it, we stand, or divide it, we fall.
They're not getting anything.
They've got the survey going so far.
They gave us, but they're offering, did you tell the public the substantial amount of money?
You can't, because we're in negotiation.
Okay. What are we in negotiation with?
It's a lot of money.
If you said, "No, we're not in negotiation."
It's, they're offering a lot of money if they can put battery storage facilities here.
I just, I need everybody to know what is really going on. I could care less about a vote or not a vote. I really don't care.
I'm not voting. I just need to see direction. Well, me too. I don't think this is right for the community. That's all.
I think it's about a vote. It's not political for me. I really don't care.
No. Well, I care because it's going to hurt our community.
I care about it. See, you just take it to the other level.
See, I just, you know what? And in the email that was out, I talked with the vice mayor about it this evening after he will send the note. He encouraged you to send an email to Marcus.
The vice mayor about what?
That's you, the vice mayor, I guess.
Encouraged, encouraged me about what?
About everything going on here.
To send an email to Marcus.
I just told you I spoke to the guy. He told you he spoke to the guy. I didn't tell him to send no email.
So also, I'm trying to make a point here. Don't have these developers pick the village board apart. Because if you don't stand together, they're going to pick us apart.
And I hope you do the same.
There's, I do.
Teresa, that email could be incorrect. I don't know where it came from. And they misspoken, they might have misspoken.
I never said anything to anybody about sending an email. And I can't believe you just read that out loud. Because you don't even know where it came from.
Yes, I do. This is a whole progression from Mr. Hans.
You don't even know how it was manifested. You just read it out loud.
Yes, I do. I have it right from the first page.
You just accused me.
No, I'm not accusing you. I'm telling you what the email says, Anthony. We need, we need to learn to work together. I know how to work together.
Yeah, you did real well with Sean.
And you know what? Yeah, well, that was Sean. He had a different personality. But then right away, it's my fault, right?
It's, I'm not blaming anybody, but you're accusing me of shit that never happened.
I'm saying that don't talk to the developers one-on-one.
I'll talk to whoever I want to talk to.
Okay, Anthony. And that's why we are where we are. Okay?
Well, we are. We're going, we're going to finally, that's why we are.
Finally, oh.
Finally.
All this, all the work I did doesn't matter.
Let's hear about Entergy. Let's hear about it now. Let's hear about Entergy.
We're moving forward, because we have a development.
You guys have anything to do with Entergy? Did you help at all?
Yes.
Okay. You did a great job.
Yeah, I did a lot of the negotiation.
Aw, please. We're all trying to work together, but you're blaming us for doing something that we didn't do.
You're turning, I'm sorry, everyone. I'm sorry. But, you know, this has to...
You're not sorry. Trying to make an asset of the board members over here.
No, I'm not. I'm trying, it's a teaching moment. Don't talk to these...
We don't need you to teach us. We're adults.
Okay, yes. So you know everything.
You guys need to be taught.
You've been on the, okay. Then I won't court anymore. If you don't want to work with me as a board...
We don't need to be taught.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to help you. I'm trying to show you things that I've learned in the past, but you don't, you know everything, so.
I don't say I know everything. You guys need to be taught.
We'll let it go. Okay. So I guess we'll, I guess we'll just work whatever way we want to work, and I will do what I can do for the best in the village, and let's move on. Let's move on.
The reason why we got to this place is that they were told initially that they were not allowed to survey the property. And I think that was before the board had a chance to review and make a decision on it.
So I guess we're going to have battery storage here in the village. Marcus, do you happen to have that?
Stop putting stuff out there. It's not true.
Do you happen to have, I told you to save that on your laptop, the Warwick thing. Do you happen to have that still on your laptop?
How about we put out the executive session when you told us that you told Jupiter, "No," without talking to us? How about we just bring that out there?
And I bought it back, I don't tell me, because I bought it back to the board. I tell you X millions of dollars, and then everybody was, "No." Then all of a sudden...
We didn't say anything.
Then Hans came back and contacted each and every one of you individually.
But you said, "No" to them before talking to us, Steve?
That's where the concern is.
Because I was told before that nobody wanted battery storage. Now, because they throw millions of dollars out, it's changed.
It's worth listening to.
So you know what? This isn't even worth arguing with you guys.
Because you already made the decision for all of us.
The three of you are always going to work together. You don't want to hear anything I have to say. So let's continue down that road. I'll do the best I can for the Village of Buchanan, and you guys can do whatever you think is right, too.
You do the best for Teresa. That's what you do.
Yeah, right. I get so much out of this, yes. I put a lot of time in. I put a lot, full time, every day. Okay. George, I'm sorry. And David, I apologize that you had, yes?
Hi, Billy.
I just want to know, are they looking at the...
Come, come, you got to come to me.
They're looking at a piece of village property where our sewer treatment plan is. And also Glenn Griffith is in some type of negotiation with them also. So, and we can't spot zone.
The property that's for sale on that corner?
No, it's actual village property where the sewer treatment plan is.
It's on Broadway.
It's on Broadway.
Right. Across from...
So here we go again.
Across from the entrance to Lenz Cove.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Everybody knows everything. That's good to know.
I just can't take it anymore. I'm going to have to excuse myself.
All right, Anthony. Have a nice night. Nice to see you.
I can't take your lying and your bullshitting.
Oh, I'm a liar. Okay. Yeah, okay.
You're so false.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. Yes. Have a nice night, Anthony.
I don't need votes. Remember, I'm not a politician like you.
No, I'm not either. I'm trying to do the right thing for the village. And battery storage is not for the village. Thank you. Okay, George, what else? Did you have anything else? I apologize. We went off tangent there. Let's get back online.
For Dave and George, you had the recreation fees. I'm going to just want to talk about that.
Oh, yes. Let's talk about the recreation fees, please.
I see where we're coming from. I'm okay. Don't worry. I'm good.
We got noise, we got senior requests, and we got the light bulb.
So do you want to, do you want to discuss anything about the recreation fees? Because here's where we are. We had recreation fees for subdivisions. We have never done, I think our last subdivision was in 2000. I believe it was Valerie Court and Dunleavy Court. It's in that timeframe. So we've never done apartments here. So this is a first for the village doing, you know, 148 apartments, 51 apartments, and potentially other apartments on the 9-8 corridor. So, Dave, I know you had sent us a bunch of information, and... Cindy, did you print that out for the board, too? All right, dear. Thank you so much.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Oh, okay. Yep, I have it, Dave. Thank you so much.
I saw it. I saw it.
I'll just do what you got to do.
Oh, there you go. You got it.
So I know you have a list here of different communities, and that the prices really range from all over the place.
Yes. So at your direction, the board's direction, you asked me to undertake a survey of selected communities. And these are, if you recall, when we did the rezoning on the lot coverage, we had a number of communities that we identified that were in the area or comparable to, location to the Village of Buchanan. So we did the same type of survey, desktop survey, looking at different communities. And you're right, Mayor, the results of the survey are basically all over the place. The numbers start anywhere from 2,000 for a new lot. This is just for a single family, and it goes all the way up, I forget, in excess of...
Very, yeah.
They have $10,000 for a new lot.
So what the board has to figure out is, with these new developments, what the recreation fee will be per unit? Because like I said before, it was per lot, now it's per unit. So...
Right. So in addition to looking at just the per lot, we also were able to pull out the information from each of these communities on what they charge for a recreation fee for multi-family development. And some of them just do it on a per-unit basis, like the Village of Ardsley, charges just $6,000 per, $600, I'm sorry, per multi-family unit. Others, like the town of Greenberg, they charge, they have a different fee if it's ownership versus a different fee if it's multi-family rental. And then there are a number of the others that have a sliding scale based on the number of bedrooms. So, and for instance, the town of Bedford, for a four-bedroom, they have $1,000 per unit, and it goes down to 350 if it's an efficiency or a studio. And it ranges in between that. And then you have other communities like Briar Cliff, where they're charging $12,000 for a four-bedroom multi-family unit. It goes down to 6,000 for a studio unit. So I think that in evaluating the Village of Buchanan and understanding and comparing how you may compare to some of these other communities, I think you're probably looking at something that's more closer towards the town of Bedford type of range.
Bedford's a very wealthy community.
It is, but they don't get, they don't get a whole lot of multi-family units. And so I'm, and I don't know exactly why their fees are much lower than the others, other than my sense is that they don't get that type of, this type of multi-family development.
They don't. That's exactly why.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
So, so obviously, there's a range there. I think part of what your evaluation is, is understanding the Buchanan community and what it is.
And what our recreation needs are.
What your recreation needs. Now, that's, the other part of this is that as part of setting a fee, you need to have some basis for taking the money in. What are you going to spend it on? It doesn't have to be a complicated document or a complicated plan, but it should reflect what the needs of the village are. And that could be something that simply, you could do conversations or an interview with your recreation department, because they have their finger on the pulse of what the needs are. You all sitting here probably have some indication based on your constituents' needs of what you would like to see as part of improvements to the recreation system in the Village of Buchanan.
So I just, I did something real quick today, and I would like to verify it with George and the board. We'll make the final decision, but, you know, I'm only one Indian in the group of five. Pickleball court, George, I believe you said it was?
$300,000.
300. We had heard 220 last week. The pavilion, we're going to need a new roof. Needs to be painted. We're looking at 450. The pool, I think the last amount Marcus came in with was 400. Lenz Cove, the parking lot is, it was a dump. George estimated at one point it was close to a million dollars. There was talk, George told me, there was a playground planned there at one time at Lenz Cove. Lenz Cove needs a lot of work, and these people will go to Lenz Cove. All these new tenants, there's walkability to go over to Lenz Cove, so they'll be using Lenz Cove. In Lenz Cove, we talked about a dock, benches, walking path, gazebo, you know. George, you had the whole plan. And I didn't even factor in the baseball field on Westchester Avenue that needs bleachers and fencing. And also, I didn't even factor in the senior program. I came up, I came up with a fee of what, you know, and I'd like to discuss it with other people. You know, this is just my quick notes today of 2.4 million of what's needed for recreation here in the village. I mean, people could disagree with the prices, and, you know, maybe George could go over some of these at some point and just send us a quick email and stuff. And we have, according to the last census, it was 2,300 people. So dividing the 2.4 million into 2,300, you're looking at $1,100 per unit. And over 10 years, if you want to break it down, over 10 years, it's $110 per unit a year. And this is a one-time fee. So, but, you know, I'm just putting out my thoughts. Whatever the board wants to do, that's what they'll do with that, so. But that's how I was told, how you kind of figure out, you get the needs and you divide it by the amount of... And I didn't add the 150, 148 people into it. I just currently, where we stand, per resident.
Oh, okay. So in other words, you did it per, per resident, okay. On a per capita basis?
Yeah. Those numbers might be right. I, you know, I don't know, George. I have to defer to you. I just, you know, I was thinking about it today, and I just started writing things down, that's all.
Those are the round numbers. Lenz Cove, there was a master plan. We haven't looked at that in quite a while, as David suggested. Probably do, sit down with recreation and really scope out what your really, what your real needs are. And you go from there.
Well, I thought with Lenz Cove, we were going to try and put that on the back burner until we find out what's going on with the release of the property over there.
Correct.
Because why would you put the horse before the cart? The cart before the horse? It makes no sense.
Correct. Yeah.
So that should get done when the 60 acres gets developed. That's when it should get done.
But what you're trying to do is trying to get a fee for new developers.
I understand that.
Okay. That's just my thoughts. That's just my thoughts.
And these fees can be used for repairs, not just new recreational programs, right?
Well, when you say repairs, it's, maintenance goes into everything, you know. Usually it's, usually it's an upgrade, but maintenance goes into...
Well, our biggest problem is probably the pool.
The pool, yeah.
Because without the pool, you can't have a camp.
Right. And if I can remind you guys, you're passing a local law at the next meeting, which removes a language that prevented any of this from being used for maintaining the pool. So it sat there for years, and that's not part of the state law. It did not have to be in there. Whatever board decided to put it in there, they did. And you'll have the public hearing and decide on whether you want that particular language out. And then you can use it to reline your pool or to maintain your facilities, rather than letting them do what they've been doing.
Right.
Which is really the right way to do it.
So we have to come up, not tonight, but by Tuesday, really have to come up with a per-unit price for recreation. Okay.
So David, what you're suggesting is take a one-bedroom unit and charge a different rate for a two-bedroom unit or a three-bedroom unit?
Correct.
Because that's what you're going to have over there, right? You're going to have one, two, and three-bedroom units.
One with a den.
And dens, okay. Right, right. So again, you could, you could have a sliding scale. And certainly, there's plenty of examples of communities who have used that sliding scale. And I think that makes sense, rather than just a flat fee on a per-unit basis. Because typically, a two-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom and den is going to have more people than just a one-bedroom unit. So that's, and that's why you would have that difference in the, in the scale, right? So that would be my recommendation, is that you would have a sliding scale. The larger the unit, the larger the fee, and then you gradually, gradually go down from there as part of the fee structure.
And part of it, too, is that typically you update your, it's called a needs assessment, which is what this is all goes towards. Usually you update it like every five years, because stuff gets built and it comes off your list. And it gets adjusted periodically. So that's also part of it. Because you mentioned before Bedford, Bedford did a lot of improvements over the years. So they have new gazebos, new pools, new this, new that. So as you build those things, you know, they have a lifespan, 10, 20 years. So that's part of the reason why they're lower, too. So...
And David, on your analysis here, you know, where you say, let's say, for example, Village of Briar Cliff, 6,000 one-bedroom, that's a one-bedroom home, correct? These are not, the only, the only multi-family example you provided is the town of Bedford?
No, no. In Briar Cliff, when you see 6,000 for a one-bedroom, that's for a multi-family. If you go just above that, $12,000 for a new lot...
That's a new residential, one-family home.
That's a single-family home, correct. And then everything below that is a multi-family unit.
Townhouses, condos, that sort of thing. Yeah. Because there's a lot of condos in Briar Cliff.
So for example, in the Village of Briar Cliff, for a one-bedroom, it's $6,000. But in the town of Bedford, a one-bedroom is $500. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's a large...
It's a big difference, yes.
It's a big difference. And then in the town, it's 6,000 a lot or a unit. So there's, you see just a huge range here. So the board's going to have to decide what fee they'd like to do there. Stephanie, when do we need the fee? Schedule by?
I have a resolution drafted without a figure for next Tuesday. And simply, I'd like you to get these in place before we start having developers that need to know what we're charging. I don't want you to back into, I think it just looks more appropriate that you discuss it and put it on your books now, early, quick.
All right. So the board will make that decision. So I think we're good with you, David?
And Georgia.
And George. We're good? All right. Anything else, or we're good?
Do we know what we charge for when we had the single-family developments done? Per lot?
Their current fee is 8,000 per lot. I don't know what it was back then when we did the development. But it's been 8,000 for a while.
So it would be 8,000 for a single-family residential, and then if it's a rental unit or condo unit, we should probably charge like David's recommending, per bedroom, like if it's a... we should probably charge like David's recommending, per bedroom, like, i- if it's a one-bedroom, you charge a thousand. If it's a two-bedroom, you charge twelve hundred or thirteen hundred. If it's three-bedroom, you charge fifteen hundred. Something along those lines, I guess, is what David's recommending.
Yes. Correct. And, and because I think you may have, um, a potential for a townhouse, you may wanna go, you know, start at a four-bedroom.
Yep.
And then work your way down from there.
Yep.
Good. Good suggestions. So you guys can, uh, decide what you want there.
Well, we can all decide.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks, George. Appreciate it. And don't forget, a wa- before August eleventh, George.
Yes. That's the deadline for it.
Yeah, try to get it in sooner because it gets busy that day.
It does.
Okay. So do you wanna talk about that now, what your thoughts are, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom?
I say we, I say we should hash it out now, so Stephanie has something to go with for Tuesday.
Yeah, she's gonna need it. Tuesday's gonna come fast. Sorry, Dave. You thought you were getting out of here, huh? Do you think a townhouse would have four in it, do you think?
It's possible.
Larger ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. So throw it out there. What is it?
Well, we've already got it established for a, a residential lot is eight thousand, so we still, you said, uh, an eleven hundred dollar figure, roughly per capita.
Rough, yeah, rough.
So, you know, maybe we look at eleven hundred as a starting point for a one-bedroom and then do a, a, a scale up. I don't know. I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but, um, that's probably the logical way to start and go up.
And then you never know too, with some of the developers, there, there might be some negotiation involved yet too, so.
How much do they all go up?
Eileen, you got a question?
Yeah, they're not big enough, well.
David, would there be a difference between affordable projects versus fair market?
Yes. Typically, um, there are communities, uh, that have, uh, that recognize that the affordable unit, um, would require less of a fee, so they, they make a discount on the fee. Uh, I believe, and I, I shared that with Stephanie at one point. I didn't include those as part of the survey.
Okay.
But Westchester County has recognized, there are selected communities, uh, in Westchester County that recognize that if you have an affordable unit, it gets discounted as part of the recreation fee.
Right, but these two projects are both fair market.
They're both fair market, yes.
Okay.
Good question, though. I never even would've thought of that, but.
Eileen, we don't have, um, we're one of five communities, five or six communities in the county that does not have, uh, an affordable housing component to it. So there are communities that you have to, like if a developer comes in, they have to reserve ten or twenty percent for affordable housing. But, um, they pressured us pretty hard when Rob Astorino was in because they had the problem with the affordable housing. But, yeah, we didn't, uh, we didn't buckle and, and talking to one of the mayors down county, she said, and she's in a big city market, she said, absolutely not. First of all, you have to give discounts for the, for the developers. And not only that, it's, she's getting a lot of people from, um, that are moving into the affordable housing from the Bronx. So it's, they're not taking care of their own community. So, yeah. So it's not all, you know, you, you have to take.
I knew it was fair market.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, no, that is, like Dan said, that is a good question. Yeah. Okay, Dave, I think we've tortured you enough. That's, so, you know, um, what do you, what do you guys think? What do you think we all?
I think we have to be able to do some math here and figure out what we're really trying to accomplish. Cause if you look at the number, just quick numbers here, just throwing a round number out there, we're not, we're not near what we wanna be. If that's what we're looking to do.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't be shy, Bob.
I think we should give ourselves some time to, uh, maybe look at some numbers here and really sit down and see what we're really trying to accomplish here because some of the numbers we're throwing out here isn't, you know, gonna accomplish the goals that we're looking to set forth here.
So we should have something set for Stephanie by Friday then?
Maybe, I don't know how it feels about, maybe getting together before the meeting next, uh, Tuesday and maybe we have between now and then to all kind of.
But we gotta sign this into law on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
No, no, no. You're just amending the, the schedule by resolution.
Yeah. I don't know what everyone else thinks about, but I'd like to have some time to think about what, what we got coming up development-wise and see what kind of number we can throw out there.
It's fair enough.
Cause the numbers you're throwing out there are what, how much was it?
Yeah, and the only reason, Dan, the only reason why, what you do is you add everything in a pot. I understand what you're saying with the sixty acres, but you add everything that has to be done.
Yep.
And that's how you back in and out of it. That's what I was told. So you're, you're right. We probably, that probably when the sixty acres comes up, that's when that will be, that's when that will be, you know, dealt with. You know, that'll be negotiations from the board at that time, what happens with that property.
Right.
Or clean path, one or the other. You know, something will happen there. That's all. So, okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
So you guys, you wanna guys, you just wanna hash it out?
I don't know what else to feel about. That's just my, that's what I would like to do. I mean, I could, we can talk now if you want to, but.
But I think, I think that eleven hundred's probably, or thereabouts, is a close, if, probably a good starting point for a one-bedroom and then go up. That's just my feeling.
All right. So think about it and, you know, talk about it and, uh.
But I think David's right. You do it on a increasing scale based upon the size.
And if you start at eleven hundred, then you go.
The developer. It's a one-time fee from the developer. And that's how we, we had gotten that recreation money years ago. I think there's, Cindy would know, two hundred and twenty thousand still in that recreation. Um, it wasn't spent, all of it, so. But that was from developers years ago. Probably in two thousand, if you think about it. Um, okay. So, all right. So you guys are gonna think about that, mull on that. And, uh, if you wanna meet earlier on Tuesday, we just have to know ahead of time so that there's a special meeting set up ahead of time. So it's announced. Okay? Uh, let's see. What else do we have, Marcus?
Uh, you have the noise.
Oh, Dan, yeah, the noise ordinance. You had a, you had some thoughts.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's that time of year and, um, you know, we've been getting numerous complaints from people in the village about noise and late-night activity going on that, um, you know, it's a quality of life issue and it's gotta be nipped and abut. And I think it's, it's time to revisit, um, what we have on the books as far as ordinances and, you know, come up with a, uh, something that's gonna be a little more, uh, stiffer to, um, try and curb this stuff before it gets out of control. It's been a huge problem down in Austin. It's been a huge problem up in Peekskill. And I certainly don't want it to become a huge problem in Buchanan. So it's time.
So Cindy, I know, did give us the, um, where did I put it? Cindy, the code as it stands. So Stephanie, if we.
I don't have it.
Okay. If we wanna change, so if we wanna change the fine, does that have to go to a public hearing?
If you wanna change the fine, is there a fine listed on here?
Yes.
Oh, yes. From twenty, no, less than twenty-five.
So it sounds to me like you're gonna amend this, this local one anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it has to be.
Not less than ten and no more than a hundred.
So can we do the fee first?
That's not a fee, it's a fine.
I mean, fine, I'm sorry. The fine first, yes. It's a fine because they, they're getting. So you see what I mean? Do we have a, uh, cause we have a schedule of fees. We don't have a schedule of fines.
No, you're saying the fines is here.
Right, right.
Right?
Right.
I don't know what the fines are anymore. Is that what the fines are?
No less than ten up to a hundred?
Yeah.
Should it not be sliding scale of multiple offenses?
Yes, it should.
I think that's what we were discussing.
In my opinion, absolutely, it should.
I think you should look at this whole thing. You wanna do a public hearing and just do this penalties? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I think, I think Peter's on to exactly what we need to do and that's start at a base. And on repeat offenders, it's gotta increase because it's, it's the same properties.
I'm not gonna do a local one, so.
Are, are you looking at changing the times as well? Cause my understanding, the police cannot issue a fine because some of the noise complaints is within the timeline that's allowed.
I, I say we look at the whole ball of wax while we're here.
That's what I'm saying. I think what Seth Stephanie's saying, so instead of creating multiple local laws for public hearings, look at it, make all the changes at one time, hold it one public hearing.
Absolutely.
Okay. You also, by the way, just wanna put on the record here, you need, um, an enforcement officer, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know who you have enforcing this, but most of the other community, all of the other communities that I looked at, it, it's in their code and it'll say either the building inspector or the police. And probably the building inspector's around and, um, available, but during the nighttime, you're not calling you out.
It'd be the police, I would imagine.
Right, it'd be the police. We don't, we don't have anything in there.
Can we, we also bring up, uh, light ordinance of glare and affecting the property line.
Mm-hmm.
I do have other references from.
Oh, good.
That's another whole section. Say no more. Sorry, I thought it'd be part of it. I thought it was related.
No, just noise.
Okay, but now on the sound ordinance, on the same thing, there's also just a fifty dollar fee. So you wanna.
Yeah, so there's two different.
Right, you wanna change that also.
Ordinances that relate to noise.
Yep.
Wait, there's sound?
Yeah.
Yeah, and noise control.
The sound trucks.
Which to me doesn't make much sense.
When was the last time this was updated?
Article one is sound trucks.
But then over here.
Yes.
This was.
That pertains to just sound trucks, article one.
Right.
This is all under the same code.
Article two is noise control.
This was adopted in nineteen seventy-one.
It looks like it.
So it's, it's time for a tweak.
The trucks would drive by with the megaphone.
I'm seriously. Time for a tweak.
Maybe it's.
Yeah, it, it, quite honestly, noise control is noise control. It should just be one ordinance. Am I correct?
Yeah. I don't know why this is.
I don't think there's any sound trucks driving through.
I mean, you do have some updates for two thousand seventeen.
That's probably for like the good humor guy, you know what I mean? That's probably what it was geared towards.
Demolitions.
But I, but I think Peter's right. It's gotta be on a increasing scale because it's the same repeat offenders that it's, it's becoming an issue.
Okay.
And that'll be another number, just like with our recreation, what, what fee schedule you wanna start off and how you want it.
I'd say you start off at a hundred and go up. That's just my opinion.
I say bigger. Cause if it's the same people continually doing it, they get hurt in the beginning.
Well, it's the second fence we're gonna go to.
Right, the second fence, then you go to two, then you go to two hundred or whatever.
You can give them a warning. And if it's the same people, you know, that we know about, I'd say, in my opinion, I, I'd start at two fifty. Cause the normal person that's gonna get warned will say, okay, I'm done for tonight and you won't hear from them again. Well, you know, we have problems here that may not be fixed unless we do something a little harsher. That's my opinion.
Okay.
If a warning was documented, would that be the first scenario?
If that, if that's in the code.
If that's in the code, a warning to comply, and if not, then escalate to a fee.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
And then second and third offense?
Yep.
I just don't understand.
Yep, that's exactly why you should go.
That's just how I feel about it. It's, I'm kinda tired. I think Dan is too, of some of the situation we have going on here.
Two fifty.
Yeah.
It's just out of control and it's gotta be corrected.
And do you hear that, uh, that on, on, by your house too? Is it that loud that you can hear, um?
No, but I know about it.
Yeah, people tell you, yeah.
I mean, most people, uh, you know, we've all had people over our houses and if the neighbor comes over and says, hey, listen, you're getting a little loud. It's eleven o'clock on a Saturday. Most of us will say, okay, sorry, and we'll shut, we'll shut things down. If we're going to people constantly and they're just like basically laughing at us, we gotta make it hurt. Sorry.
Yeah.
That would be the good neighbor policy scenario to.
Correct. And, and it's, the, the good neighbor, uh, policy is, uh, it's, it's not happening
Not happening.
In some of these scenarios. So it's time.
At least it's clear. We understand, right?
That's just my opinion.
Steve, what do you think? Start at two fifty, start at a hundred, start at?
I think.
Two fifty, five hundred.
Yeah. You get a warning first, two fifty.
And then five hundred.
And then five hundred from there.
Okay.
For every offense thereafter.
Yep.
So, so the only thing is, I'll say, what other items you, if the board wanna look at, wanna change hours, wanna change, anything else?
Well.
Well, no, ten on s- yeah, cause that got changed because there, you had, you had, you had Joe contractors coming at eight, seven o'clock on a Sunday or eight o'clock on Sunday morning and most people are home.
Yeah. I thought we were eleven o'clock and Sunday was ten. Is that the?
Yeah, until ten AM on Sunday.
The numbers? Do you wanna lower it? No, not ten AM, ten PM to stop noise.
You're talking at night.
But, but Peter, it's all over. It's, it's, so you have, that, that's why it's gotta get tuned up because animal noises are prohibited between eight PM and eight AM.
Yep.
So that's animal noises.
That's animal.
Got construction noises. And then you have all other or raucous noises likely to disturb people. So that can't be between the hours eleven PM and eight AM.
So eleven PM?
So it's like.
It's, it's.
Like which, you know, what do you?
It's, it has to be a decision made on that.
So when do you wanna, I, I think the question is, when do you wanna stop the noise?
Noise.
At the, at the end of the day and not have these separate categories.
Dan, do you have an input on timeframe on that?
I, I mean, I, I think eleven, I think eleven is, should be the absolute drop.
For every day, Sunday?
No, I mean during the week, not eleven. I mean, it should be.
During the week. Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday is, should be earlier and then on a Friday and Saturday is maybe a little, an hour later. But, you know, it, it's, I, I think the, the fine part is the biggest part, I think. Because it's, until people, people really see that, um, it's gonna affect them.
Yes.
For not complying.
Yes.
Um, that's the only way you're gonna get them to comply.
This is so confusing. And then you get into.
Yes, the whole thing should just be scrapped and rewritten.
It's nineteen seventy-one.
Yeah. Between the hours of seven PM and eight AM on all days, prohibited until the hour of ten AM on sunny, Sunday, minibikes, snowmobiles, like, is it noise? Is it noise or?
E is the one that I think you're more concerned about, correct?
Yeah.
That's the noise that you're concerned about more.
Yeah, because you, you get, you have to keep, you have to hold people accountable. And the only way you're gonna hold them accountable is by, you know, unfortunately making them pay a fine.
And you, and you kinda have to simplify this for the code enforcement person. You can't like be all over the place here. So when, when does the noise stop? It doesn't matter what kinda noise it is. And then, you know, with a barking dog, is that all day long? Like if somebody complains? You know, so really this, you really, this has gotta get taken apart.
Okay. I don't know what you guys want. Those are my thoughts. I'm still waiting. So the one, uh, the one problem I have and, and I think it's valid is E.
Mm-hmm.
You have to define what that is. What's likely to annoy or disturb people? Like you might be disturbed by.
Another neighbor.
You know, my kids, yeah, running around playing, you know, soccer at nine o'clock, but no lights or anything. And I might not be annoyed by that, right? So we're just saying loud, likely to. We gotta figure out a better definition of what's annoying people. Cause that's not what's annoying.
Eileen's got another question.
Volleyball?
Come up, Eileen.
Yes, Eileen.
No, just, is there a decibel level?
No.
No.
Oh, gosh.
Shouldn't there be a decibel level?
Yeah, but who's gonna read that decibel? Are we gonna get equipment then and somebody's gonna?
And how to be calibrated.
And calibrate it.
Well, I think the other problem with that is if someone complains, then whoever's gonna be there, the police officer or the, uh, building inspector's gonna speak, it's gonna be quieter when they show up. So how are they gonna measure that?
Correct.
The noise will stop as soon as the cop comes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, is there a way that, uh, whoever it may be can have, for lack of a better term, like a discretionary decision-making on that? Like he can hear it himself saying, yes, this is a problem? Or no, it isn't?
That's what's hard.
Cause people do make complaints and sometimes it is kinda frivolous. They don't like their neighbor.
Correct.
So is there any way we can have something like that?
Most of the codes have the decibel thing.
Yes, most, again, HVAC requirements.
From the property line.
Yeah, Westchester County HVAC, or New York State, uh, HVAC compressors, things that are running generators, can't be more than sixty-five decibels from ten feet from the property line. And I have an, uh, there are apps that read that within a decent percentage.
Yeah, but if they go to court.
Yeah, that's a court. It's gotta be an official calibrated machine.
Yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah.
I had one in another place.
That might be, yeah.
It'd be hard to enforce.
Personally, I, I think without going through, uh, a lot of effort, but just changing the fee, I think would, would have a significant impact.
It might, but my problem with that is you're gonna send somebody out there, so let's say it's Peter.
Yep.
And you make a complaint, and then you get to court, you're gonna s- you're gonna, you know, cite him.
Relate to the code, yeah.
Right. And then he's gonna be in court, and if I'm a judge, I'm saying, who defines loud or?
Right, what are, what are the numbers?
Likely to annoy. They were playing volleyball. Now, I'm at midnight, but I think that that, the hours could take care of that, stop doing it.
What's the range? The timeframe, right. That's why I was suggesting time.
I think that's the issue, I think that's the issue we're really talking about here, for the most part, I don't think we really have any problems here, do we? I mean, not that we wouldn't, but right now our problems are after hours.
Right.
Correct.
I think we do, right?
Correct.
Aren't you having issues?
Yes.
The time.
Are people having issues?
Yeah.
Is it after eleven o'clock, PM?
That was my question.
It is, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Would it still be as annoying to the neighbors if it was at nine o'clock? If nine o'clock?
Ten. Nine.
Ten, well, whatever. That, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to solve it without then going to court and say, prove that it was likely to annoy.
Eight on Sunday.
I think, I think their biggest issue is. They've, 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 they've kinda grown to accept the fact that it's, it's an ongoing situation, and that they're, they're gonna have these, you know.
Events, events.
Events and gatherings, but there comes a time where you're sitting in your living room.
Yeah, I get it.
Trying to read a book or watch a, watch a movie, and you can't even do that in your, in, in your own home. Okay? At ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, okay? These things have been going on till ten, eleven thirty, midnight, one, two in the morning.
So then it's a time thing.
That's true, that's written in the code.
Okay, so that's, it's, enough's enough.
That's already written in the code.
But they're gonna get a ticket right now.
Right.
Yeah, but it doesn't have too much teeth to it right now.
Yeah, but if you give them three or four times, that's three hundred bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Yeah, but I think once you're at the time.
Two fifty, five hundred.
Kinda helps a lot, enough?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
There was a time, you know, if you're talking loud in your backyard and your neighbor's bedroom window is right there, it's keeping me awake.
That's right.
One code, um, I think it was Briar Cliff or another one, it was interesting, because the person that was called out, you or the police officer, um, they had it enforced if there were two different neighbors that were.
Affected.
Affected or annoyed by it, it was kinda cool, so it wasn't like you just hate your neighbor.
More than one?
Yeah.
Yeah, who would be willing to say, you know, this is really annoying, this has been going on every weekend at eleven o'clock at night, you know, I don't know how much it really helped.
Right.
But I think that.
And this one specific incident, this one specific location, it's, it's, several people have complained about it, so it's known, okay?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how it works for them.
So it'd be a fee schedule adjustment, fine, penalty, fine, I'm sorry, fine, fine.
Yeah.
Fine, fine. It starts with an F, right?
And a time duration would be the other old, option to set.
Yes.
So let's figure out a time.
Like is eleven too late? Is maybe not on the weekend, like you said?
Sunday especially.
You know, so, like people work Monday through Friday, so is it, you know, is eleven o'clock too late on Tuesday night?
Yes.
You know, so, and then people have their parties on Friday and Saturday, so.
I think we have to make it simple.
Yeah, you have to.
Make it simple, so it's not, not, not all those other.
So Sunday through Thursday until ten AM or ten PM, and then, you know, on Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, eleven.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, July.
Eleven.
Or holidays.
Holidays, that's another.
If it's all there, maybe it's Fourth of July, or the date before Fourth of July, whatever.
Right, right.
That's where you're getting told it.
You know, and the cops have the discretion, right?
They do.
If, if, if they go on the property and they, and they say, hey, listen, enough's enough, we've got too many complaints, it's time to shut it down. I mean, the homeowner should have enough common sense to say, hey, guys, the party's over.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Or bring it inside, okay?
And I think the problem may be if those homeowners don't wanna listen to what the police are saying, that's the problem we're having.
Correct.
Then the fine.
That's right.
Warning, fine, bigger.
And then, and then increase the fine, if it's a repeat offender, absolutely.
Okay. Would it be helpful to have either the chief or somebody kind of express his thoughts on how to make this law a little bit, you know, more, um.
Enforceable.
Enforceable.
Oh, yeah, I do, uh, yeah, her, the judges, the, the judges will be the problem.
Or that too.
And not our judges in particular, any judge.
Right.
I was gonna say, define that, well, what were they doing? They were playing volleyball, what time was it? It was eleven, ten. Okay, they were playing volleyball. Well, they were screaming and yelling, and sixteen neighbors complained, it's a problem, and this has been every weekend for, you know, we have to nicely.
And those neighbors, and those neighbors have to be, wanna, wanna be able to come to, to the court, to express it, but not if you have cops saying, and no neighbors, nothing happens.
Come forward.
Right, you know.
Well, it's amazing what.
Cause most normal people, like you're saying, if I have a party and it's at eleven and a cop comes out and says, could you please quiet it down? I'm gonna quiet it down, I'm gonna end the party.
Right.
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 Correct.
If you have to come to my house every single weekend.
Right.
It's an issue.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
So we have to, but it.
They don't look forward to the weekends.
Yeah.
My discussion with the chief, he'll do whatever, whatever you guys decide, he's.
Shane said that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
So then there's our understanding from the police perspective.
They just wanna make sure they be able to enforce it.
Yep.
That's, yeah.
Eileen?
What did Chi, uh, Chief Merrill say? What did Chief say?
That he's agreeable to whatever.
That he's agreeable to whatever terms were agreeable to. And again, we're not trying to, we're not targeting the people that have an event every, you know, once in a, once in a blue moon. This is a situation, these are situations that it's every weekend, and it's ongoing.
It's the non-compliant people we're looking to address.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Most people are good, you know.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I have a neighbor who has a party once a year. It's once a year.
And invite, invite everybody. As long as they invite everybody, it's fine.
Right.
They're fine. They invite somebody, everybody, everybody has a good time, that's it.
Yeah, but that would be a warning, and it wouldn't be.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's right, yep, it has it.
Right. So, but to get this straight, the rest of them are okay, that, like the snowmobiles and all of that from seven PM and, all the ones that were, um, done in two thousand seventeen, you see they were mended?
Yes.
I think, I think it just needs to get simplified for the person that's going to, you know.
Are those good?
So E's, that's, I think Stephanie said, E's the only one you wanna focus on? Everything else is okay, all the other items?
To, to me, E was the biggest one that I, I wanted addressed.
Yeah, that was crazy.
And, and the fine, that's it, that and the fine.
And, and, right, and.
And C, this amplified music, is that a problem over there, or?
Oh, yeah.
It should be, um, wow. That's gonna be a decibel issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, gonna have to measure that.
We have a little machine or something. All these communities have it.
I had one, I had one, I had one adopted.
Do you have a decibel, whatever you.
No, you have the.
Not an officially certified unit.
Yeah, it has to be certified.
It has to be certified, you and those marks.
Shane would be going, too.
Yes, that's right. You have one, it should be more than kept here, has to be, has to be calibrated every year.
All right, so we need to speak about decibel levels. I do not know anything about that. Yeah, and what's that, decibel, zero, a hundred? Seriously, so we'll get together, I can talk, I can look at other codes, but I don't know how old they are, and I don't know how crazy they are, cause they give the decimals, sixty-five? All right, so then we'll deal with that. Um, C would be like a decibel reader, right?
Yep, correct.
So amplified music would have to be beyond, it'd have to be blast.
From the property line.
But then, um, there's no time on that one, so.
Correct, so, uh, uh, we, and that's what we do in other places, it, it is, it is a certain level beyond the property line, that's controllable all the time.
Yes.
And then Peter wanted to address the, you, you wanted to address the bright lights shi- shining into people's.
You gotta get a section of the code from Irvington, and then we, that'll be a new section of the code.
Yes, I, I did, I did. It's not light nuisance as in sound, it's light glare. Not that's how they.
We're gonna do a new code section, a new local?
That'll be the. I have a code section from Irvington on that, I can discuss.
Send it, email to everybody.
I will email. I did get it, and I guess I'll ask Peter to discuss.
You're the best.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did discuss it at the last meeting, and I did acquire that code.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Next is the senior club request.
Oh, yes, that's right. So Marcus, if you wanna go over that with the board, seeing what the request is.
The, the seniors wanna be able to allow non-residents to join the senior club, hopefully you have in your packet, and they wanna, their numbers have decreased substantially over the years, and they wanna be able to let, um, outside, it could be Verplank, it could be Montrose.
Yeah.
You know, it's like we're all part of one community per se, everybody knows each other, so they wanna be able to allow those individuals to join the senior club against that po- policy procedure set by the village, so if that's okay with you, they'll change the bylaws and make those modifications, if the board is okay with that.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, I think that's a great idea.
No problem at all.
Perfect, that's an easy one.
Yeah, that was easy.
And then the last one, we have the request from an individual on Gallagher Street. She wants to put a light pole in front of her house. There's lights on every other street, street pole, uh, street light. Uh, each, uh, other pole has a light already. She's requesting another light, which is, will create a situation where creative precedents, where people can request for lights, so I have a concern for the board, is if you entertain that, then you have an issue with other people requesting, how you say no to other people in the future, or somebody saying, I don't want the light now, take it out, and that becomes a safety concern.
Well, that was, that was gonna be.
I know Bob has experience with that.
Well, I think I remember in the past, this has come up in the past, or before it's in the past, and they've said the same thing that Marcus is saying, that, you know, if we do it for one, we have to do it for all.
Right.
I have one in front of my house, I have one in the darkest parts of a street in a, in the village, but it's what it is.
So you're requesting one now?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. It's every other telephone pole in the village has a light pole on it.
Just checking.
Yeah, and then what about the neighbors that necess- don't necessarily want that additional light?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And nowadays, they have all those motion lights, right? If you're saying they wanna be able to use their driveway at night, so install on, and it'll go on when you need it, and you don't need a light pole.
Different. Yes, yeah.
Correct.
That's true.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, you're gonna have a request, like you said, for, you know, a street light, you know, popping up, uh, you know, on, on a more frequent basis.
You have no lights in the neighborhood. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm not going by there at night, it isn't really as bad as I think it's being projected to be.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, so let's.
All right, good. I re, I reply to the rest of it.
I have a question. Are those LED lights?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a way, cause I've heard that LEDs, rather than being broadly, they're weird.
It, it, it depends, it depends on the light, no, it depends on the light.
Is there a way, is name of the scene that?
It depends on the.
The shrouding.
It depends on light, how it's made.
How it's deflected.
Yes.
I mean, is that what, ma- maybe that's, is it, is it very, a very.
Oh, they're also.
Narrow beam, it could be a narrow beam or it could be a wide beam, yes.
If anything, you can make a, a, a brighter light.
So would that help? Yeah, would that help? I mean, if they're complaining that between the two is dark, if you, if you, can you do that on these lights? I don't have any idea.
But I have to see. When we.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a totally different light, you have to replace the light.
Their light.
Picture light is a V from its point, and then goes X amount of heat from its center point. Even if you made it wider, it's not gonna go thirty, forty, fifty feet, cause it's a little wider in the shroud, it's not gonna.
Yeah. No, I know.
Well, that's a good thought.
And Bob was in va- Bob was in va-.
Well, when, when we converted all the lights over, we basically replaced all the LED, or the older lights with LED lights that were equi- equi- equivalent to, to lighting, that was there in the past.
I know. So there's still, it's, it's not like, didn't make a huge difference, less light. I mean, they're brighter, I know they're brighter, but I, I've seen some of them, and they.
Not as honest.
Very narrow.
Yeah.
Very narrow beam.
Can't hear me?
Yeah.
But, but you can't adjust them anyway, so it's, it's a moot point.
No, the only way you can adjust them is by putting a, a higher light, a, a bigger light in.
Higher light.
Okay.
A higher, wider light.
That's not what I was suggesting, I thought there was a way to.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a.
Tell them what pro it lights, right?
I have a light pole in front of my house, I have to close my shed, oh, right, my whole bedroom is lit up.
That was completely.
Is that a V?
It's LED.
Yeah.
Pete's go, it's way too bright.
Did we, we switched, I know we switched the streetlights, but did we switch the, uh?
Yes, I think, I think we're totally LED everywhere.
That could've liked, we changed LEDs too.
All done, okay.
It's one of the lessons I did.
Yeah, okay, good, all right. Is that it?
That was all.
That's on the agenda. Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
I have something real quick and executive.
Okay.
And it's on contract negotiations.
Okay. Marcus, anything?
I have something for executive as well.
Okay, executive.
It's a per- a personal issue.
Oh, okay, all right.
Uh, the trees, the trees at the circle, we discussed that last month.
That's funny you, I was just gonna bring up.
And, uh, I know after we'd had the discussion, after one of these rainstorms and windstorms, we had a big chunk of a tree come apart, as I walk my dog every day.
Yes.
And I can see in that branch where the tree is actually kind of hollow in the middle, rotten in the middle, you know, and that was on the tree that isn't dead, when it's dead is on Worcester Avenue. I don't know what the rest of the board's pleasure is, but I think we should really think about taking them down. I think we can do that in-house.
Let me know where to go.
Well, the ones, the one is literally dead.
One is literally dead. I think we can get it a stump grinder and they can grind them out, maybe fill them in with either brick or concrete to match with what we have there now.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I did speak with Cheryl Gilmore from the beautification committee, and she's more than happy to have that happen, and she has some ideas of how to replace them.
Oh, good.
And I know that there's been talks.
Wouldn't it be replaced?
Well, there's some talks about possibly putting plants up on the light poles and decorating it from that aspect, or possibly putting some, uh, larger planters with some flowers that way.
As you see in some places where they have the cement planters that are bigger, and then you could actually put a, a tree in there.
Yes.
So that's an option too, but I think to put another tree in its place might be a problem, because even if you stump grinded, the roots will kill it.
The roots, yeah, the roots, yeah.
Yeah, the root is still gonna be there.
You know, and plus the roots over time, Bob knows, have lifted.
I mean, I look around, a lot of other communities right now, they do, it, it just seems to open things up a little bit more, you know, if we decorate it properly, and we can make it look a lot more enticing as we're entering the village.
Yeah, because the, the, the beautification committee does do a great job, I mean, the, the circle looks phenomenal right now, so, I mean, hats off to them.
They're wonderful.
But maybe we include them on the decision-making process.
Yes, that's why I spoke with her about it, she had, she had a couple ideas already, her and Becky, you know, they're, they're pretty good in what they do.
Yeah, they always have, they have, they're good, they have a lot of ideas, no, thank you, Bob.
So, you know, I, I'd like to personally see them, I'm not a tree hater, but those trees aren't in very good shape, they're, they're more of an eyesore than they're worth.
I, I agree that the trees need help, but I think with the environment changing, I think it's really important to have shade trees around.
Good, I could see what kinda tree.
Yeah.
Could go into a planer.
Yeah, another problem we have, if we did get rid of those trees, which this will be the second or third one that's been taken down 'cause it's died, and I think the problem we'll have is, as Stephanie was saying, that the, the existing tree stumps, we're gonna be able to grind them out, but we're not gonna get them out of the ground. And I don't think we have anything to grow in there.
Right.
Right. That's correct.
We're gonna put you in charge of looking at planters.
Whatever.
They got the nice cement ones, like I said.
Yeah, we'd have to be careful of how big they are, because the sidewalks aren't that wide, and they're too close to the road in the wintertime, if they're, you can't move in the winter, they're gonna be hit by a plow, the salt will do damage.
Yeah.
Right, they're gonna get hit by the plow.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So things like that, we, they, we can have the beautification committee come up with their ideas too.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh,
Sounds good.
You know, if we can get them taken out, I mean, I think, I, I did speak with a couple guys in the highway department about that, you know, they kind of feel the same way I do, I think a lot of us felt that way over the years. So.
Time to go, you know, those trees were planted, I wanna say the circle was done ninety-four, ninety-five, so they've been, that was when the new sidewalks went in, the trees, all that stuff.
So, that's what, I'd like to say that, of course, the board agrees with that, I think we should go forth with it.
Okay, good.
Uh, let's see. I have a question about the sixty-five acres, or sixty acres, wherever it is, are we waiting for Holtech to release that or develop it themselves, and is this something that we can go into negotiation with, talk about it earlier than later? Why wait?
We, we have it in the, well, because there's, there's things going on right now.
Why wait? Even the-
Um, they're, they're very aware that we're interested, also in the intervenor agreement, when Entergy sold to Holtech, that is in the agreement, that they continue to have a conversation with us over that. Um, I mentioned to them not too long ago, the board was interested in coming back to speak to them, um, that's one of the things, that we'll be speaking to them.
Yeah, I like, I like, I think that maybe we should actually include Lenz Cove with that, and maybe talk with the developer about, you know, we're trying to do stuff on our own, which we're struggling with money, if we can somehow get a development, or maybe take all that over and come up with a plan that we can kinda guide and get what we would like to get out of it.
Well,
Right.
A develop, they would sell it to a developer, so we would be out of that.
I look at, I look at like them- Yeah. Right.
Right.
You mean, including the, the village only?
Yeah, including the village only property, I mean, I, I look at like, uh, down in Austin, what they've done down there, you know, you know, we're trying to, we're struggling here, money-wise, we can, uh, you know, we want walking trails, we want this, we can have a developer come in, or maybe give us what they wanna do, but work with us, and we get what we want out of it, and we don't have to worry about maintaining it, and they only, we get the luxury of using it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's what they-
I, I, that's something that's been on top of my brain for a long time.
No, yeah, no, and, and we talked about that with the LWRP, which I gotta get ahold of Nick Zachary, I, I don't know what the update, I haven't heard from him.
Yeah.
Still waiting for the state response.
Oh.
But, but the question I do have, and it's like, I know that in the past you've talked about rezoning down there, would we have to do that first?
Yeah.
So, I know it's been kicked around for a while, and maybe we should maybe,
We are, mm-hmm.
you know, get back on that, and maybe get some stuff in place, so that when they're, when they can release or develop whatever they're doing, we can be ready to go, and not have to be spending five months trying to get zoning laws changed.
That was, that was the game plan, and then a whole bunch of things started happening, uh, as these guys know.
Mm-hmm.
Which I understand that.
And, uh, we gotta refocus back on that, that, that was on my list of stuff to, to get back on track, so when the property's available, it can, you know, so this gives the board time, what they'd like to see over there, would they like to see, uh, mixed-use, commercial, no industrial, 'cause that's not what you want on the burger anymore.
Right, I, I think, I think we should have the conversation, try to get that kind of ironed out, later.
So, that's why, that's why we had money saved for that, and I don't remember, Marcus, what happened that, we kinda got off track on that, 'cause we were, we were working on the rezoning of the property.
Uh, there were, uh, there was some discussion about the She-Rock plant, and then it, it stalled because of that issue.
What was that, can, can you just refresh my memory on that, with that, what stalled it?
So-
Uh, part of the rezoning, we included the She-Rock plant, and the She-Rock plant objected to that rezoning, and we've been, we've been on hold, on hold since then, so that's what happened.
There would basically be a, would have been a grandfathered use?
Non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming.
A non-conforming, right, and so, they'd be grandfathered in, except that-
They can reject- They can reject us rezoning it?
No.
No.
No. So, they, they voiced their opinion, and we, as a board, we're looking into what to do next.
No.
Right, right.
Correct.
So, we, we can, we can, we can wake that up, if the board wishes to go move forward in that direction.
Right.
I think, I think we should put that, you know.
Yeah.
I think we should, that's my opinion on that, and that's all I have, oh, wait, one more thing.
Okay.
Now that I'm on the board, you know, I used to walk my dog, I'd say hello to people, talk to them once in a while, that would be it, now I get some complaints now and again, I am getting some complaints from, uh, one individual, that's noticing a lot of, uh, dog bags with poop in it, in the catch basins.
Oh. Oh.
And, yeah, or on top of the catch basins, and that's what they do, but it's worse than that, because when I do walk my dog, there's certain streets I see where, they're, right on the sidewalk, there's just dog, dog pieces all over the place, you know, I walk my dog a mile every day, the streets are clean, but the sidewalks, for some reason, and they're right there, you know, I know who does it, I don't see him do it, but I know, but that'll never hold up in court, who's doing it?
That's terrible.
Yeah, I would agree.
That's terrible.
But that's, and that's been, that's always a problem.
Taking photo. Yeah, exactly.
No, no, I don't see, I don't, I don't-
He doesn't see it.
Listen this way, I don't see them-
We gotta do a DNA test.
DNA test.
I don't see them do it, but I know the size of their dogs, and I know where they, and every once in a while, I'll see them, the dogs are doing what they're doing, running, but I don't see them do the actual thing, I wait for them to do it, so I can confront them on it, but, working here, I saw, but I'm even more now, walking through the circle, I see it, I see it on Worcester Avenue.
That's terrible.
Yeah.
So I just wanna put a little public service announcement, I guess, saying, pick up a few dogs.
We, we can put some, we can put something in the newsletter, we'll put something in the news, it's funny you're saying that, Channel Twelve News Today was a big reporter, I think Yonkers?
Yonkers, yeah.
Did a whole thing about people leaving their dog poop all over the place, so they increased the fines, and they put signs all over the place, so.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
And that's a hard one, unless you see the person do that.
Ah, yeah.
Correct.
I, I, I walk my dog, he's a good-sized dog, I pick up after him every time, but there are times, just in case someone wants to say I didn't pick it up, or a Jeep, I ran out of a bag, I, I go home and get back and come and get it.
Yeah, yeah.
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 You know, so, but it's so bad on Worcester Avenue, some spots where you can see where people stepped on it.
That's terrible.
Yeah.
It's, 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 you know.
No, do we have fines for that?
Uh, yeah, they, I'd probably go, yeah, well, Sheryl was taking that little picture, no poop, no, yeah, so far, we'll put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, no bueno, right.
We have signs, we have signs along, I mean, we have signs along the, the, the streets here and there, but I hate to see signs all over the village, and tell people to do the right thing, that's, that's what bothers me.
That's right.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Like, I always call it sign pollution.
Yeah, but, um, Bob, I had quickly mentioned it before, there, uh, was money that, uh, the senator put out, uh, I can't think of his name right now, federal, but there's federal money, and it was supposed to come to, uh, for economic development, for, um, this is something different from what Nita Loey had done, and, uh,
Oh, did it?
So we can tap into that money to, uh, look at the economic development of that property too, so I'm gonna be meeting with the county, um, in August, and then I'll bring that back to the board.
Okay, that's all I have now, thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve, what do you have tonight?
Uh, just, you know, we had a lengthy dis- uh, discussion regarding the recreation fees, but I would really like to revisit the idea of, of having a committee, getting some people together in recreation, so we can decide what the needs are, uh, recreational needs for the village are going forward. Um, you know, I know, I would like to see George with the, the bids, with the pickleball court, I'm not really sure whether he's actually gone ahead and started to advertise with that or not, I know, you know, he's left already. And then just, you know, going forward, I've asked, you know, before sitting on the board, I've asked while being on the board, but as far as with the pavilion, it's one of the biggest assets of the village, and it's locked all the time, constantly.
Um, it's supposed to be open.
And I've asked multiple people, depends on who you ask, who's responsible for unlocking and locking the pavilion every day, depends on who you ask, you get a different answer.
I'll, I'll give you the answer, I'll give you the answer, DPW opens in, in, in the morning, and police will lock it at night, the last time I checked, what, what, what DPW and the police say it was being done, so I, I'll, I'll check again tomorrow.
Nah, it's, it's locked all the time, and I understand it's a little different with camp, which I, you know, even that I don't agree with, but, you know, our, our camp supervisor's not here to, to tell me the reasons why it should be locked, but it should be open, it, it's, it's for the village residents, it should be used by the village residents, it should be improved, certainly, and that's something that we'll look into with, with these fees, uh, coming in. So, um, in addition to that, I just wanted to make mention of, um, the passing of a longtime village resident, um, you know, six-year men- member down at the Buchanan Engine Company, a good friend of my father's, Mo Merritt, who recently passed away, so.
You know what, Steve, remind me on Tuesday, we'll have a moment of silence.
Yeah, his services are this Saturday down at O'Marris from twelve to four.
It's one of our longtime Buchananites.
Yeah.
He's been on Second Street for many years, yeah.
And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, and I just wanna comment, um, if you're available, uh, next Tuesday, it was tough getting everybody together, so, but I have something for the rec, uh, committee, and it'll be an advisory committee that will report back to the board, um, at six-thirty, and I don't wanna give them any ideas. I, I'm just, you know, if you wanna come with me, I, I want them to walk through the pool area, get a visual, I want them to walk through the pavilion, the back, you know, the back, you know, roughly where the, uh, the field is, I want them to go to the village hall, look at, you know, that there, you know, if they have any thoughts, and I also want them to go over to Lenz Cove and take, just take a look at that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And, um, so I don't wanna tell them what my thoughts are, so I, I just, I, I'm, I'm not asking the recreation supervisor to come, because I, I just don't want, I want their thoughts as a village resident, I wanna just keep it clean like that, and, but the only other thought I would ask would be what other type of events, you know, because they, they have some younger children too. Our seniors are pretty much the program, the new program, uh, we have Mrs. Juliana, who is now the, um, the head of the seniors, she's doing a phenomenal job, the seniors are happy, so they, they have, like, their events and their things, so I'm, I'm kinda looking just for, like, you know, what, what the residents think they would like to see, so, so we'll take the walk, and
One is that-
I'm just not gonna, I'm just not gonna, you know, and then they'll decide when they're gonna meet to have the conversations of what their thoughts are, I just, I don't wanna put anything in their head, you know, I want them to have their own ideas and be creative. So, but thank you for mentioning that, yes, we gotta get that going, especially, we might have some extra, we might have some money that, you know, we can address some of those things.
Sure. Right.
Dan, what do you have for us?
I just had, uh, three tr- quick things that just hit me over the week that, um, I just wanted to bring up, um, now that our IMA has been signed and, and, you know, in play, um, when's the state gonna reimburse us for our engineering and legal fees?
Good question, Dan, what a good question.
The last team, uh, I asked that question, the last team, until the revised IMA is signed with the changes, they're not gonna release any money, that's what I was told.
And that is correct, they are extorting us, and I'm putting that on the record again.
Again. Again.
And I'm holding back, so, what happened was, the IMA-
They already gave the, the, uh, the deal.
And the cooperative agreement, well, with the cooperative agreement, that was the one where they were giving the seven million, right? Anyway, they took two hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever they took away from it, and gave it to somebody else, so now they'd like us to put in writing-
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
To, to the, to the Pipe Fitters Union, to the union.
Okay, but I mean, they didn't, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter, so, um, so now we're being held hostage until we sign, which I have, I have the new cooperative agreement for Monday for you guys.
Okay.
Um, and the new IMA, but what really, really irked me was that, um, they asked us to make the changes, they made the changes, which we incorporated, the town did as well, um, and I responded and said my board meets on August, whatever that day is, and we'll be signing it. Marcus then submits for reimbursement, and gets back, nah, we're not gonna do that until they sign.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
We have a valid IMA, and we have a valid cooperative agreement, and we don't need to change it to get reimbursed, because the governor said we should have been reimbursed, but anyway, I digress.
Correct. Well, we need to stand, yeah. We need to stay on top of that, all right.
That's where we're at with it. You're gonna be, you're gonna be approving it, uh, the mayor to sign the two of them on Tuesday.
What if we don't approve it?
Well, I'm gonna tell you this, Wheels, and I swear to God, if I win the eight hundred and twenty million dollars, I'm ripping that up, and we're gonna get a new sewer treatment plant, and that's the end of that.
That's ridiculous.
And everybody gets a new car on the board, how's that sound? Well, yeah, well, uh, you know, I didn't say Mercedes or anything, so, good question, Bob.
So, two more things, um, Bobby brought up the sixty-acre parcel over there.
Mm-hmm.
What about the, what, where's Holtech in relation to the other parcel that the town was asking to be released?
Still in negotiation.
Because I would hope they wouldn't release that before they release ours.
Did they release it already?
No, they, they're still, they're still, they're not settled yet, they have up until the end of the year to settle with the town, and that's part of the settlement.
But that parcel, they've already started their, I forget the name of the, the scoping-
Yeah.
Redeeming. Absolutely.
Right.
If you got a developer, already go, absolutely.
Yeah, Ginsburg, right?
Yeah.
What's the pilot program of?
What was the year of the pilot?
All right, and so, um, while we're talking about, while we're talking about money,
Yeah.
if I remember correctly, didn't we get some kind of a grant from Mr. Harkam, where's our big check?
George is working-
He didn't come down with a big check for us?
Oh, no, sorry, Dan, if he does, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure the whole board is there, so you can get a picture with the big check.
Tell, tell me when our big check.
So that was, that's going to go towards the painting of the pavilion.
Okay.
So that will, 'cause the pavilion, after that, the only thing we have to take care of there is, is the, uh, the roof, which we still have a little time, um, are you done, I'm sorry?
Yeah, those were the only items I had.
Okay.
So, the other thing that I've asked Marcus to look at, uh, there's a CREST grant that came out, uh, from Harkam, because he's Mr. Environmentalist now, um, and it's for, and Marcus, I, I don't understand why an emergency vehicle wouldn't be a police vehicle, because it says here, it's electric, electric hybrid heavy-duty construction vehicles, it's heavy-duty road maintenance vehicles, emergency vehicles, a police car is an emergency vehicle.
It has, it has to be a heavy-duty vehicle, heavy-duty.
So can we get one under a hundred thousand?
What's the definition of a heavy vehicle?
Yeah, like weight-wise or something?
F-two, F-two fifty, F-three fifty?
Over, over some weight, or-
It has to have a weight rating, and a police car's not gonna have that weight rating.
No, but I, I would think an F-two fifty or an F-three fifty is, a truck that size-
Yes, a truck would, yeah, but not a police vehicle.
Right.
Well, maybe we could use it for the highway, if we can get a vehicle out of it, why not, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. Hey, up under my way, there, the, the police are in those trucks.
Yeah, if you can get a, if you can get a new heavy-duty pickup for the highway department, that the, that the, that the foreman can drive around and, and have at it.
They are, they really are. And then, it also says a light-duty emergency vehicle is included, so, I- Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean-
So let's get two out of it.
If we can get two light-
Let's get an F-one fifty and an F-three fifty.
You want the picture with, in front of the cars too, with Harkam too, or comes in?
Sure, if he want, if he wants a picture, sure, as long as we get what he said.
I gotta remember too, that includes charging stations.
I, it, it can, but the grant is only for a hundred thousand, it's gotta be in by September eleventh, so we, we got a short turnaround on that, so.
Okay. Okay, that's right, I can get a price of a vehicle tomorrow, that's fine.
Yeah, if we could, yeah, if we could look at that, that would be great.
That's the grant, that's-
And I thought, I thought tonight we were gonna do, and it's late, I know, but we had enough going on today, but I thought we were gonna do the capital, to speak about the cap-
No, so we're waiting for some information, we got some information, waiting for the lights, uh, the traffic lights, so we've been, so we're waiting for more, we don't get back to us on, and some, and some other stuff, and the fire department wants, like, wants you, so if they don't get, Dan, they're gonna wind up giving you a call, they wanna meet with you and, and replace your fire truck.
Oh, all right.
Just to give you the heads up.
Just bring a check, Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll let you know when that meeting is.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we are holding the nine-eleven ceremony this year, uh, it will be in Croton, um, so we'll be doing the arrangements for that, um, there were problems a couple of years, they were too lengthy, and, um, we might change it up, how we do it, I'm not sure, and really have the first responders, um, doing the program. So, I felt bad, one year, the poor firemen, they were, they were melting out in the heat. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm, we got a hand raised.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, if you wanna finish first, and then-
Okay, yeah, and they might have, um, September sixteenth is Buchanan Day, uh, we did get a donation from Certainty, I just wanna make sure our donation is the same as, um, Mount Carmel's, because if not, we're the host community, so, um, I just wanna verify that we have the same amount. And September sixteenth, I said, was Buchanan Day, uh, we're gonna have a walk-run that day, so next month's flyer will be advertising that, uh, Buchanan Day, and the only other thing was the entrance signs, I know Diane Tangen had mentioned it, I was kinda hoping that the developers would pitch in to, but it's not gonna sound like it's gonna be like that, so, um, we'll go forward, I will show you guys, the, uh, Marcus had gotten some prices, I just wanted to look at, uh, have the beautification committee take a quick look at it, so, we'll put one where, um, by Blakely Avenue, we, we can't put it back where it was, 'cause that just is a mess over there, and it's, we only have a thin strip of property where the, um, the gas line is there, and then one by the school, and, um, and, um, we'll talk about in the front of the village hall, the one that's there, maybe we should put it on the building, because when it's the summertime, it just, it gets lost in all the trees and everything, so maybe, you know, we'll talk about that, and by Lenz Cove, and I know that got hit many times, the one by Lenz Cove, but we have to look at, yeah, that was like a target over there, it just, that poor, that poor village sign, just, yeah, so, we will look at the design, uh, maybe Monday, we can, uh, show the board the design, and they can start talking about which one they like, and we'll send it to the beautification committee, see what they're interested in. So, who do we have a hand raised?
Hello, you can, unmute yourself, you can speak. We can't hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me now?
Uh, now we can hear you, yes.
All right, great, uh, thank you, um, good evening, everyone, I actually wanted to just circle back to, um, the garbage, uh, relating to, like, dog waste, and I noticed that there's only, I believe, one garbage can in Buchanan, right in front of the police station, is that something that we can look into, um, maybe adding more garbages in the village?
Bob has a lot of experience with that, Bob, what you think?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna show, we're gonna send that to Bob Wheeler.
If you, if you were to do that, I think you have to do it in some places where you're not gonna have a lot of garbage cans just sticking out alongside the road, I understand what you're saying, 'cause that garbage can is the only one that I'm aware of right now, except for a couple that are at the circle, I think it's still two at the circle, maybe one.
I think so, I think-
Don't we have one across the street from Fat's House?
This one? Oh, yeah, we have one across from Fat's House, we have one, uh, by the barber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And sometimes-
Was there a certain area that you were thinking about?
Um, not specifically, I used to walk my dog quite frequently in Buchanan, and it was just something that I noticed, that there were no garbages, or not many, um,
We've always just, we've always, we've always just tried to put them in spots where we thought they would be needed, you know, so,
Well, maybe it's-
Marcus is saying, if there's a spot that you would like to have one, you know, we, I guess we can talk about it.
Yeah, I, I think we should, uh-
At the end of T, because T is walked on quite frequently, um, maybe towards the library, if that's possible.
Well, yeah.
We'd have to look into that, because to, to put anywhere, we'd be putting it in someone's front yard.
Yeah. Right.
And then that's gonna be a problem too.
Yeah, Tate, Tate's tough, because there's not a sidewalk, and you, you, you encroach on people's property, but I, I know a place that comes to mind for me, is when you're walking up Lindsay, and you go past, um, somewhere along Lindsay, and where you go past Gallagher Street, walking up towards the church, there should be a garbage can somewhere along there, because there's constantly trash along the road.
Right, and of course, like, I've seen a lot of garbages all over the village, like, that's not pretty bad, but people are fed, so it's dog waste on curbs.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, no, I s- I see your point, and, so, I guess we can-
Look at different, you know, different places, but that's a good place by Gallagher there, Dan, where our sidewalk is, and-